Okay, and next up we have is under public hearings. This is item number 11, City Council District Map Review Including Presentation on Three Draft Plans Created by Redistricting Partners for Council. Review and Feedback. With that, staff report, please.
I never would be good at that little game thing. Yeah, sorry. Okay, District Elections. As you recall, we have been in this process for a little bit. We, this is the third hearing out of five that we are going to have, public hearing on district elections. We have been a city that has been electing its representatives and voting for its representatives since 1965. It's incorporation at large. And since receiving notice of violation in 2017 of the California Voting Rights Act of 2001. The city has begun this process and our goal is to move to our first district elections in November of 2022. So, we have, we had an ad hoc committee and have been working with the consultants, redistricting partners. We held workshops about communities of interest and about this process. And we have sent information and done outreach, conducted outreach via the newspaper, online, and citywide mailing about the district, how to create and develop district maps and communities of interest. We received 23 community of interest testimony maps. And we received 130 draft maps via mail, email, and online. And the consultants have drafted three, five district maps for us following the Fair Maps Act. And have used the communities of interest testimony and different draft maps that were submitted. And each of the district in the, in the drafts adhere to all the principles that they need to. So they are all relatively equal in size. They're contiguous, they maintain communities of interest together, they follow city and census designated blocks, and they are compact. Next, the city council will listen to a presentation from our consultants. Sophia Garcia is here to present the, the draft plans. And these draft plans were posted on the website. And individuals who signed up to the website to get information about the process have received information that these draft maps were online. And we did publicize it on the Coastal View and via social media. And after hearing the presentation, you, the, the council and the public will have an opportunity to offer feedback. And the council will have the opportunity to direct the consultants, redistricting partners as to what changes they wish to make, if any, to the draft plans in preparation for picking a map or selecting a preferred map February 28th. And at that point, you can choose to elect a map that's presented then. And then confirm that on March 28th, or still make changes on February 28th and receive changed maps or amended maps, March 28th. So we ask just for continued engagement, both of the council and the public as we continue in this process. So Sophia, if you're there, we're ready for the presentation.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. I will share my screen. Are you able to see the presentation?
Yes.
Perfect. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Excited to be here, excited to review these maps. It's a really wonderful overview of the process, Olivia, so I can just glide right through quite a few of the beginning slides. Because I know we have, the bulk of what we want to talk about this evening is that testimony that we received and the draft maps. But we will do a quick overview of the CBRA, those traditional redistricting principles, the public submissions, the community of interest testimony. Of course, we have your current lines and information. And then we'll review the draft maps and next steps. But you know, hurry through some of those beginning slides so that we can get into the discussion. So as was mentioned, we are moving from an at-large to a districted system. And when we move to a districting system, it doesn't determine how the city will decide to govern moving forward or the relationships with the residents of your city. It does determine who will be eligible to vote and who will be eligible to run in those new city council districts. And we know that, we've, we've heard this many times before. So the CBRA or the California Voting Rights Act takes some of the principles of the Federal Voting Rights Act and expands on it. And so for the Federal Voting Rights Act, it does talk about majority minority. But under CBRA, it discusses the ability to influence for particular protected classes. There are some legal fees that are corresponding with CBRA cases with plaintiffs. However, these can be lessened or eliminated when and if the, the council and district follows a prompt process, which we are doing and moving forward with your staff right now. The traditional redistricting principles are the principles that are in this Fair Maps Act. There are also a number of principles that have been upheld by courts. They're the best practices that are used in the industry. They're also the criteria that we utilize to create the draft plans. And all three of the draft plans are based on public testimony, which is wonderful. We love to see that. And we also, when we were doing that, evaluated those public plans based on this criteria. So the first criteria, the reason why districts and councils have to redistrict every 10 years is to create districts of relatively equal size. This criteria holds a lot of weight. It discusses the specific data that we have to use. So we're using that point in time decennial census file. It lets us know that we're using the total count of people. So we're not looking at citizenship, only that total count. And it also lets us know that you don't have to have districts of exactly perfect size. You have some room to have districts that are a little bit larger and smaller from one another. And that's the deviation. And we'll be talking about that and discussing that through all of the draft plans. A contiguous is the thing where we have to have all the districts that geographically touch one another. And a number of the publicly submitted plans, there was quite a few that weren't contiguous, but that was because they may have missed one census block. And so we again evaluated that and modified that for those draft plans. Maintaining communities of interest is a wonderful criteria. It's one that we have really elevated throughout the Fair Maps Act and this criteria. We've also received quite a bit for your city, which is great to see. The city can also look at additional government data such as neighborhood lines, census designated places, neighborhood boundaries. That's the criteria which allows you to look at additional data. And then finally, to look at districts that are compact. And this can be in two different ways, appearance or in function. So does a district look like a shape that we're familiar with? And if it doesn't, if it looks a little funny, is there a functional reason why that district looks the way that it does? Again, these are the evaluating criteria that we use for all of the draft plans. As we move this evening from all that wonderful community of interest testimony, from your meetings that you have with the community, to sending out those placemats to all of the residents, to the utilization of Districter and having a portal on your site for public comment. We took all of that engagement and emphasized a couple of things. So emphasize that this is a community-driven process, that we are utilizing those traditional criteria and that we are here for engagement and to listen to the council and the public. For the submissions, again, Olivia did a wonderful recap of all of this work that you guys had done. The city has decided to utilize an online mapping tool called Districter, which is on the City of Carpinteria specific redistricting webpage. It's an online tool out of Tufts University that allows for anyone to create a community of interest map or a district-based map. The city also hosted multiple community workshops that were hybrid. And then we had online training of that Districter tool and got as of January 18th, 45 full district plans, three partial plans, and community interest maps as well. We have converted all of those Districter placemats as of January 18th to the Atlas format, which is the same format that we sent in all of those district plans to you. So you have the overview page, there's a data page that describes all of the districts. And then finally, a by district page for all of those publicly submitted plans so that the public and the council could review those. We also did the same for those community of interest submitted maps. And for some of the community of interest maps, the public was able to add specific comments or any more information to those. That is different from the district-based plans. There isn't that ability on Districter to submit specific comments on district-based plans, but they do have that ability for the community of interest-based plan. For all the submissions, they also had a webpage where you can zoom in and out. So you can see more of that street level detail because we do know for the PDFs, it is a little bit difficult to see that street level detail. So you do have those webpages for all of the plans, all of the draft plans. And here's just a zoomed-in version of what those look like. For the public plans, we put them into themes. So we did review all of the Districter plans, all of the community of interest submissions. And then we also looked at the 99 placemats. And so we have three or a couple of themes that those plans were grouped into. There was one that's called noncompliant. So for a plan that is noncompliant, we got a number of placemats that just submitted a single district. And so we are moving to a districted system, so we can't utilize that for the process. There were plans that had more than five districts, so you are moving to five districts. So a plan that had six, we couldn't really utilize for the process. And then plans that were noncontiguous or plans that were above that 10% deviation. Just because a plan is in this theme of being noncompliant doesn't mean that the council or the public can't uplift a specific area or a district for that plan to move forward. You still can discuss those, tell us what you really liked about those plans. But for the purpose of utilizing them as a base draft map, we weren't able to do that. You have plans that were also split along the 101, many that kept the downtown corridor together, kept the coast together. And then we also saw the themes of keeping the northeast boundary of a district at Dump Road. And then the southwest boundary split along Linden Avenue. So we have a couple of the plans here for you listed. We're also working and will send this evening or tomorrow morning the submitted plans report, which will give you all of the Districter maps and the placemats and tell you which theme that they were in. We have a number of them here for you. So again, we received a lot of those placemats that had the city as a single district. And that's great that you have a lot of wonderful folks who are engaging in this process. But again, we are moving to that districted system. We had a number of plans and placemats that kept the coast together. And here's a number of them for you with the district IDs and then also the name of the folks who submitted their placemat. We have quite a few that used the 101 as a major boundary. So it's, it's, it's really cool actually going through all of those placemats, seeing the amount of work that people put in and just the volume that you were receiving through your staff. We had quite a few that used the northeast boundary at Dump Road. And we did use the base of Jim Taylor's map for your draft, draft Plan C, which we'll look about, look at in a little bit. And then finally, the split of northwest boundary split at Linden Avenue. This is that community of interest report that I was talking about. We're still gathering that and we'll get that to you ASAP. And then it will have all of those plans and those placemats with a little bit more detail so that the staff and that the council and public can evaluate those with more detail. Again, you received 99 placemats as of when we created this presentation. And again, just the volume of that was really, really fun to look at and review as we move forward for your draft plans. You also received 23 public comments through your online portal. And all of this is available on your website. For your existing lines, of course, you are currently at large. For your 2020 census data, you have a little bit over 13,000 total count. And again, this is the way that the data table looks where you have the total population for that 2020 data on the first half of your page. And then on the second half, lets us know that citizen voting age population data. So that is our data that lets us know the Latino, Asian, and Black citizen voting age population data set. And again, just as a reminder, these are folks who are over that age of 18. We have three draft maps here presented for you. And the council have had these prior to the meetings, so did the public. They are based on traditional criteria and community of interest testimony. But again, they are based specifically on three public plans. They were posted to the website prior. They are purposely lettered, not numbered. And this is a temporary structure for identifying seats as the sequencing will happen at the end of this process. It will happen after a final map has moved forward. We do this as a best practice because we, as your consultants, are not the ones who will choose the numbering of your districts. That is what the council will do and decide at the end of the process. Each draft has also been created with a less than 10% total deviation. And that again is referring to that relatively equal size or that first criteria on our traditional principles. Draft Plan A was based on the Districter ID number ID 95054. It has a deviation of 8.2. And that main theme here is it uses the 101 as that major boundary. When we say that we use a district plan or publicly submitted plan as the base, it means that we often just went in and cleaned up the plan a little bit. Again, a lot of public plans were submitted and may have missed a census block or may have been slightly noncontiguous. And so we went into our internal software and made sure that all of the census blocks were accounted for. And again, that we're following those traditional criteria. We have the data table here, but again, your deviation for this plan is 8.2. So we do see that the numbers, and we looked, we have a couple of Latino influence districts. And what that means is that that's the CBAP of a particular group is over 30%. And so we see in District A, C, and D, that you have over that 30% for that Latino population. Draft Plan B has a deviation of 5.9, so a little bit less than the Draft Plan A. It was based on the Districter Plan ID 93368. It keeps all of the coast together in this plan and then also keeps that northeast area together in D. We see here the data table as well. This one also has a number of influence districts for your Latino population, for your District A, B, and D of over that 30%. And your District C was based on a placemat by Jim Taylor. It has a deviation of 8.2. It keeps the northeast together, but this time at that Dump Road area. And then also keeps the downtown beach area together as well. We did see a lot of similar constructions for your draft, your District C in the public plans as well. You have your data table for this as well. And again, you have three districts that are over that 30% influence for your Latino population. So as Olivia mentioned at the top of this, at the beginning of this presentation, we are here to receive amendments from you, from the council. These are draft maps, they are not final plans. And this is an iterative process. So we're here to listen to the council and to the public. Though the council is the one that would have to give us specific direction for any amendments. And that could be where they want to look at deviation, to potentially lower that, to identify any specific changes between districts. And so that could be just a one-to-one swap. Or we can look at changing every district in a particular plan. Or you can ask us to move forward and uplift another publicly submitted plan. Again, you do have quite a few to choose from. And so those are just a couple of things that you can ask us to do. So we will evaluate all of those amendments. We may not be able to do all of them. Again, we do have the constraints of those traditional criteria and the deviation, but we will definitely look at those and make sure that you have those drafts with amendments for your next meeting. So we're here again to get those amendments from you. And for your final, for the next meeting, of course, we're going to have those ahead of time so that you and the public can review those. And then just again, as a note, the sequencing of the districts will be done at the end of the process after you have passed a final plan. Olivia also noted those specific dates for those next meetings. So we do, we are here this evening, January 24th, for the first public hearing. And then you have a hearing scheduled in February for your second draft maps. And then in March will be the final hearing. For the final meeting, there will, that map will have to be posted seven days prior to that meeting. And in order to vote on it, there can't be any substantial changes to that map. Otherwise, you'd have to host another meeting and then vote on it then. And so that's the end of the presentation. So I know there was quite a few, quite a lot to digest, but I'll stop sharing the screen and then hand it back to staff to continue with this, with this item and the discussion.
Great. Thank you, Sophia.
Thank, thank you, Sophia. And that concludes staff presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
I have a question, but it doesn't involve the, the district boundaries. It involves, if you were elected from one district and moved to another district a year later, what happens?
Sophia, I don't know if you know that question or.
Because I could see that happening.
Yeah, so anyone's term can't be cut short. But if you were to run again and you moved addresses, then you'd have to run within that new district that you moved to.
But if it were to happen like in the first year, so you're, you're out of that district for three years.
You are elected to your seat and to fulfill your term. And so you will fulfill, fulfill that term. But then if you have a new address, you'd have to run in that, that new boundary or that new district.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll now open this up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? Nobody in public here, so Brian?
Mayor, we do have one speaker, Lisa Guravitz. Lisa, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. And Sophia, that was an excellent presentation. So I appreciate all the work that y'all are doing. I, I noticed that you said that one of the common themes in, in that one of your maps included using the 101, Highway 101 as the border. But the map that you showed, I think it was A, did cross the 101. And I would like to see if you can, and I know there were at least two maps submitted that didn't cross the 101. So I know that Fred and I actually submitted one of them and Al Clark I saw, and there might be others as well. But I'd like to see that as another option, is definitely not crossing. It looked to me like that map A did cross it. And so that's what my opinion is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes Zoom speakers.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council and the discussion.
Yeah, through, through the mayor, just a question, you know, we received three samples, but why, why did they arrive at three? Why not five? I don't know who can answer that, but.
Sophia, I don't know if you have a different comment on that, but I think it's just to simplify the process and it's just a, it's meant to be a starting point just so to, to have some sort of themes that are common rather than make you sit through an exploration of 99 to 130 maps.
But if there were 40 something maps submitted, it seems like there could maybe be a couple more.
Yeah, Olivia's correct. We just have a three as a starting base to kind of move that, the conversation forward. But you, as a board, can definitely have us go back and look at specific plans or see if there's additional themes. But again, we did review all of the Districter plans and the placemats and grouped them into themes and uplifted a couple that we saw had those major themes throughout.
Yeah, and Mayor, if I could also respond, I think as Sophie, Sophia indicated, these are based on the common themes they've distilled. If council members believe that there was a common theme that they like or would like to talk about that isn't in this batch of three, certainly let, let us know and Sophia, and they can bring back information about this. As she mentioned, this is a, that's the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear about that. And it's an iterative process. So you won't be selecting a map here tonight of these three. You'll just be talking about the themes and anything that you feel is missed or would like to see different information in order to get to that point.
Yeah, I understand. You got to start somewhere.
True. Yeah, Al?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I was, I've been wondering about this communities of interest thing and what it really meant for a long time. I've been on this subcommittee and so we had, we were working with this stuff early. And I, I kind of thought what, what boiled down what it meant for me and it might be mean something else to anybody else, but that it was, it was really neighborhoods. And it's like, you know, I live in my house and my neighbor is next door and next door to him is his neighbor. And we have this sort of bond of social discourse because we live in the neighborhood and we're, we're this sort of close knit community. And I realize districts are kind of bigger than a neighborhood. And yet, you know, it's this sort of chain of, of a neighbor talking to neighbor kind of makes a neighborhood. And so I think that stops at the freeway. I think the freeway is a barrier. Greg was telling me tonight that the freeway started in 58 and finished in like 62 or something like that. And it was, it was something that divided our town in two.
Did.
And, and our town is, is developed since that time differently on the different sides of the freeway. And so I, I think that I'm favoring a model that uses the 101 as, as a dividing line and just have discreet neighborhoods on each side. And I, you know, I really don't, I, I mean, there's examples of some maps where you just, where people are divided like the beach area right in half. And I don't, that doesn't make any sense to me because that's, that's a discreet neighborhood. And that's just one example. But the, the speaker on the phone mentioned that she and I had made maps. And I, I, I just, I wanted to make copies of the one that I made. And it's not, I'm not offering it, I made copies for everybody. I'm not offering it to say you should pick my map or that you should even be, be considered. But something like it be considered because it does go, it, it does have neighborhoods on either side of the boundary and, and, I mean, other side, either side of the freeway. It has a very, a very low deviation in population. The population's fairly consistent overall.
Mayor.
And, and I, I like it because it has a little bit cleaner boundaries, that the lines are a little bit.
Mayor, if I could interrupt, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. If it's possible, I'll ask Sophia, since you're speaking to a particular map for the public's benefit, is it possible to bring up the, the map that the Vice Mayor is referring? referring to?
It's number 79756.
But just a quick comment to your, your map here, it's, it's not far from draft Plan A.
It's not, except the draft Plan A goes across the.
One little, one little area.
Yeah, one little area. So, and but also, and if you look at B and A, it's, there, you know, there's a little bit, there's a little, there's little sort of funky lines that I, I tried to make mine kind of like cleaner, clear-cut districts. It's hard, it's hard, and, and most maps have in common, you'll see, there's a break on Al Carroll Lane. And so the people live on one side of Al Carroll Lane are in one district and the people on the other side of Al Carroll Lane are in a different district. And most, not all, but most maps do that. And that's a function of the census blocks. It's just this one giant census block and makes it very difficult to divide that up. Anyway, I just offer that to, that, that we should, I think we should consider some map, not necessarily this one, but one that, that does honor that, the freeway as a, a major boundary that divides our community.
Okay, I'll repeat my, through the mayor, repeat myself, but yours is very similar to the A, but A goes, includes the state park, which is different. And that little area at the very end of Carpinteria crosses the freeway. That's really, in, in the Al Carroll area, you changed a little bit, but it's very similar to draft A.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you. You have any other comments?
Mayor, my comment is I'm in favor of draft Plan A. Hope for slight change to possibly include the Sawyer Street for District C and get it out of District E. I think it's important that we continue as much of the current council members to be able to continue their role as council members. And I think map B is fair. I think it's, I, I don't agree that the freeway should divide our community. Whether we District 105, we all represent Carpinteria as a whole. If you cross a freeway, I think, you know, we're neighbors regardless, so.
Well, that's true. We have, you know, we have relatives and neighbors that live in all districts and we go to those places, but so we should just have one district then, right?
I wish, I do, but.
There you go.
But I do agree that Plan A is the best, in my opinion, the map to move forward.
So I, I've got a question based on that. Should, should we be setting boundaries by where council members live?
Vice Mayor Clark, through the mayor, I can jump in here. So the, the short answer is no. The act itself and the, the applicable regulations are not totally clear on this specific point. But if you look at the intent of the laws that are at play and the language especially, what Sophia was showing in terms of the priority of what you should consider when drawing lines, you cannot consider incumbent addresses, political parties, et cetera, when you are drawing lines. That's not allowed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I think Olivia wanted to.
Go ahead, Olivia, thank you.
I just wanted to point out that we put up Vice Mayor Clark's map that was referenced on, on the screen.
And, and maybe if Sophia could answer, I think the question was, that came up from the speaker and is inherent in the, the map that Councilmember Clark was referring to, is this little tail at the eastern end of town that went across the freeway? And is that, is that necessary in map A, Sophia? Or could it be amended without consequence?
Um, yes, so I was, and I think you can see my screen. I'm, I think I'm sharing the PDF of draft Plan A. But we ran the ID number 79756 that the council member was referencing. We added that into our internal software because there were a couple of census boxes that were not accounted for. And so the deviation of that plan is 9.67. So that, that is high, but it is under that 10% total plan deviation. And for draft Plan A, the total deviation of, of that, let me go back, is 8.2. So it, it is possible, you'll just have a higher deviation, but that is within the allowable with is, which is you have to have a plan that's under 10%.
So just to make clear, the, the purpose in your Plan A, your draft Plan A, Sophia, from the consultant, in, including that tail at the east end, was simply to reduce the deviation between districts?
Correct, yeah. And it was, we did make minimal changes to the ID 95054, which I can pull up too if the council would like to use that as comparison.
So if I may ask, what's the, what's the deviation of Plan A?
Uh, the deviation of Plan A is 8.2. And the deviation of Plan 79756, and sorry for the beeping, it's, we're getting at home, so there's other stuff going on. And so the deviation for 79756, after we took it into our software, because if we can see here, there were a couple of census blocks that weren't accounted for and, and that happens on district or as people are submitting their plans. The deviation for this plan is 9.67.
So that, so but the, the 79756, the deviation for that is 4.1 or 4.9? And I, I did notice there were 10 people missing, and so that's that other census block. And so I don't, I'm not sure how that could, how that deviation could change that much.
On districter, it, it shows you the, the highest deviation. So it shows you the district that has the highest deviation. It doesn't show you that total range with the, the lowest district. So I'll go to the, the data table here. I'll just go to the next page. So it does give us that district. And, and here we ran it and it was 5, 5%. But on districter, unfortunately, it doesn't show you the, the least populated district. In this instance here, it's negative 4.7. But again, this is the one where we ran, we just took this one down off of districter. I haven't run an atlas yet with the one that we cleaned up on our internal software. But it's really understandable to have that confusion that comes up when districters should put a little note under there that.
So, so that the tools that were available for the public to draw maps weren't accurate?
No, they are accurate. It shows you the, it shows you your district that will have, that is most populated, that has the highest deviation, which is accurate. But it doesn't, it doesn't let you know on the spot the total, the range, the total plan deviation. So it doesn't let you know, you'd have to calculate that yourself. But that's the reason why we do the atlases for all of the public plans. And that's why we can make amendments to make sure that they're in compliance, but we can use the base of a public submission, which we did, and just modify them a little bit to make those minimal changes to make sure that it's, it's following those criteria.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a tool that is, a lot of jurisdictions utilize and it's great to get themes, to get major plans. But oftentimes there, there's just small things that the public misses, which is really understandable. There's so many census blocks in your city. And so that's why we took those down, ran all of those atlases for you. And again, still have the ability to, to modify anything. Just because it's not complete on the public end does not make, mean that we can't modify it to make it in compliance.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments? Nope, okay. With that, anybody wish to make a motion on this item?
Well, I'd like to say one thing, Mayor. You know, my feeling is that draft Plan A is a good one. I, I'm leaning towards that draft, but I would like as much public input on it as we can get. You know, I don't, I, I don't even, I like draft Plan A.
Thank you.
I don't even mind it going over the freeway at the end. You look at the, the census, you know, I, I think it's pretty accurate.
I, I saw draft Plan A too. And honoring the 101 as a dividing quarter does make sense. However, that's probably not much more than 10% of the 101 quarters. And it's at the extreme east end. So something like that, it, it fits for, for what I'm looking at also.
Well, I, you know, I was wondering, does it, does anybody actually live over there?
That's what I was wondering too.
Why, why not knock it off? Why, why don't we, why don't we?
One other quick, yeah, or sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, what, what was the answer to, why can't we just do, do map A, but, but, you know, just leave that tail over on that side of the freeway?
Yeah, I, I think that, that would be something that maybe Sophia can respond to, but it would be a great thing for maybe at the next meeting to bring back and they could run the calc's on it and see, is it consequential or not?
Yeah, I know, we're not done yet. We're not picking the map tonight, obviously.
Correct, correct.
It's just a discussion.
One other just quick comment, you know, Area E on draft Plan A potentially could be an area where the population could increase in the next 10 years. I don't know if we should.
So then, so then that district will change in 10 years, which is when we, we would revamp within 10 years.
Yeah, I, I guess we don't even consider that, but it is one of the only districts that could see a rather large increase.
Okay.
Council, did I, did I hear there, someone would like an amendment to this draft plan, which we can do. We're here to receive those. Also want to know if the council would like, after, after this meeting and they looked at them again and they would like additional amendments, you can email those directly to staff and then your staff will send those along to us. We just ask that that happens in advance of your next meeting to ensure that we get those amendments. But I just want to make sure.
Sophia, the only question that came up was on draft Plan A. If the lower, and that would be the right side on the north side of the 101, if that were to remain as the district to the north, I guess that's D, how much impact that would have? And you don't have to give us an answer, we're just looking at that as a potential option.
Okay, yeah, we will come back and.
Through the mayor, I have one other request. That for me, I don't know if the rest of the council members of the public have this, I have a hard time seeing the streets on these maps, where, where the, what streets and what neighborhoods are actually in the boundaries. I think if the, if the map could be a, a little clearer.
Would it be possible then, Sophia, on the mapping itself, if you could show or label the outside border streets as a potential for displaying the map? Or is that going to be too complex?
Um, that's, and I can show and share my screen, the, that, that web map I was talking to you about and should be available on your website. We also now have the ability to add maps into districters so we can work on adding the draft plans into districter and the public and the council can review. But I'll share my screen with the webpage that is available right now.
Is.
So here's the overview of the webpage. And if you zoom in, you can see specific street names here. And so we, we have this along with the PDF so that you can look at those specific boundaries and, and street names.
Is there any way, when we look at it on our iPad, when you enlarge it, the clarity doesn't go away?
Um, this is the, I think on my computer, the biggest that it will go, but generally on your computer, it still is really clear with the street names.
I think, Sophia, what the council members are referring to is we have images in the, in the staff report. We don't, we're not on the webpage. And once it's reduced to an image, I think you're going to lose the, the ability to see the, the street names. But if you, if you want to go to the city's website.
It's clear.
And go, yeah, then you can get into District R and the maps are going to be loaded on there. And you can open it up and see each of the streets.
I appreciate that because I've been looking and I'm getting.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I look at like the city's, city's map of the, of the street repair work. Those you can zoom in and you can see in there. Okay, that answers my question.
If I may, are they the maps on District R that Sophia's mentioning or just the maps on the web? Because even when you zoom in, there are no street names. I mean, there are very few street names.
The, the draft plans are currently not on districter, but we can add them up to districter and we can let your staff know when those are available. But all of your, you have a number of public plans that are on districter and then you have those placemats, which are also on your, your city's redistricting webpage.
Okay.
But currently, the, the draft plans are only available in the PDF or in this, the web link, which should be on your, your city's redistricting webpage.
And I have another question. I recall, I, while I was on the subcommittee, and the purpose of the, of redistricting, or should I say districting, as well as to have two Latino majority districts, is that correct or can you?
This, this has three.
This one has three. Is that correct though, Sophia, in terms of moving forward? We need to have at a minimum or is that not accurate?
So you are under a CVRA conversion, but to have a, a majority minority district, your legal counsel would have to direct us that Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act would be invoked. Right now, because we can't use race as a predominant factor, meaning we haven't shown that you can create a 50% plus majority minority district, we cannot use race as the predominant factor in drawing districts. So we have to look at it with that criteria and, and then look at communities of interest. And we have had the ability to make influence districts. But again, right now, because your council hasn't directed us to draw districts solely based on race under Section 2, we have to utilize those traditional criteria.
Okay, thank you. And just in terms of my overall comments, I think I, uh, map A, Plan A, I do like it, but I would prefer that east end to not cross the freeway. And then I actually, I also like Plan B. Section 5, though, it does cross over, but there could very well be areas of interest there, at least communities of interest. Those are just my thoughts. I don't know what you guys think. I mean, I don't live in that community. I don't, I'm not sure if there's, if there's thoughts in terms of it really not being a, a community of interest or concerns. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I really like Plan B, but I think that this was sort of a killer for me, the.
Crossing over?
Yeah, the crossing over right in the middle there. I don't know. I don't know, maybe it's not to other people, you know? Maybe everybody's just fine. I mean, maybe, maybe we should do that. Maybe we should just, you know, we're, we're all, we're all one district, we're all one neighborhood, who cares where the lines are?
Okay, um, sounds like we had a good discussion. This one here, the motion actually is just to receive and file. We will get a more clear package at the end of February for our next meeting. So if we want to give them direction at this time, now would be the time. But again, we could do this and then have the motion put forward.
And move to receive and file the presentation and public comments received today.
A motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
Yeah, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Did we need to amend the map or no, to have additional options? Did I misunderstand that?
You could, you could do that when you can give them direction on that one. Right now, it does not specifically cite that we are accepting the three maps.
Okay, okay.
But we, we did, we did direct him to look at, looking at.
We had a preference.
Modifying, right. Measure, map A.
But you know, I, through the mayor, I'd be much more comfortable if this evening there were 10, 20 public members would get up and speak and give their input. I would be much more comfortable.
Ideally, we have two more meetings. Ideally, we have two more meetings, um, that we have, um, on the agenda. So hopefully we can get more turnout. I know it's been difficult from the start. If, if you talk to the committee, even the committee had limited input.
Very little.
Did not represent the, uh, entire community, that's for sure.
Or, or I'd like to say, uh, email your council members.
Okay.
And just as a reminder, Mayor, we did receive one written comment for this meeting. You have that, and I know your council has reviewed it. And we are taking ads out in the paper for each of these meetings.
Okay, thank you.
And pushing it out on social media.
Perfect. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Um, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Cardi?
Aye.
Councilmember Alakun?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
And Mayor Nomura?
Aye.